Meeting called to order. We are on to item A, City Manager's Report Raised on Issues Raised At Prior Council Meetings.
None at this time.
On to item B, Special Events Applications.
First on the agenda is a request from the Shore Christian Church to use a city day for the Paramount Theater to do the Christmas Experience. Next is the Sons of Ireland, their annual Polar Bear Plunge on New Year's Day. Third is the 2020 Police Unity Tour, opening ceremony on May 9. Next is the Believe in Me mentoring program and requests us to use the council chambers on Saturday for two hours. And the add-on I just gave you is for a ceasefire stop the violence walk on October 30. And the last three applications are for weddings in 2020. Are there any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We are on to item D, Review of Agenda Items For The October 23 Regular Meeting.
Starting with the consent agenda, it's the resolution approving the special event applications. Is there any questions on that? Hearing none, moving forward to the individual resolutions. Resolution 335 is the payment of bills. 336 is the appointment to the Business Advisory Committee and 337 is to the City of Asbury Park Green Team. Melanie, can you please read the names when you read the resolution? 338 is a professional service contract to Action Title Search to do deeds research for the City Hall and Transportation Center lot. 339 is an appointment to the Public Art Commission, so Melanie, please read that name.
I will.
And then 340 is an addition of the authorizing and submitting a grant and executing the grant agreement for Bond Street for the Department of Transportation. Is there any questions on the individual resolutions? Moving on to second reading, public hearing of ordinances. 2019-34 is an increase in the authorization for the parking utility. This was, this one is being redone because there was an error in the last, in the advertising of it. 43 is $30,000 for computer and related equipment for the police department. The police department has a lot of Windows 7 computers which are at the end of useful life and will no longer be receiving upgrades and this will allow us to purchase new computers to upgrade them. The operating systems, Windows 10 cannot handle the hardware because the hardware is lower end. And 2019-44 is the long-term tax exemption for the Carter-Sackman property at 545 Lake Avenue, which was a court-ordered settlement. Any questions on the second reading of the ordinances? Thank you.
We're on to matters from City Council.
Okay. Tuesday, November 5 is Election Day, so please note that City Hall and the Public Library will be closed. Recycling pickup is canceled as well. So November and December council meeting schedules have changed. There's a meeting on Thursday, November 7, a meeting on Tuesday, November 26, and in December, on Wednesday, December 11, and Wednesday, December 18. And I think that's also available on our website. On Saturday, October 26, Clean Ocean Action is holding a beach sweep in Asbury Park at the North End by Convention Hall from 9 to 12:30, rain or shine. And on Saturday, the 26th, the Deal Lake Commission is holding a Deal Lake cleanup, also from 9 to noon, and folks will meet at the boat ramp near the 711 on Main Street. The Salvation Army is accepting applications for Christmas food baskets and toys for children through the age of 12. It'll begin on October 21 and run through October 25. Applications will be accepted at the Salvation Army headquarters at 605 Asbury Avenue, and I will leave this out for anybody who might want it. That's it.
Once again, this year, we're fortunate to have a trunk or treat. It's going to be similar to last, to past years, Thursday, October 31. It's here at City Hall Parking Lot. We're still asking for donations and volunteers and cars. I think we need about 10 more cars leasing. 10 would be sufficient, so call City Hall and talk to Alicia Floyd if you may. Are you full of fun, energetic, enthusiasm, and like to work with kids? There's a lot of, the Monmouth County Park System is looking for you. They're also hiring at the school program, at the Coaster Achievement Center. And there's a few others that, you have, you must be 16 years or older, maximum $10 an hour, and $20 an hour for maximum, or minimum, is $10 an hour. So make sure you check this out, and if you have any questions, please talk to Sonia about it. Thank you.
So the first thing I want to bring up is the Human Rights Committee Commission that Yvonne and I are working on. We sent out, I hope to all of your homes, a survey that we're asking that you take and return to City Hall. If for whatever reason you don't have a stamp or you can't get it to City Hall, just email or call one of us and we'll happily come out and get it. Saturday, November 2, Yvonne and I are going to be at Kula Cafe from 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m., and it's coffee with a councilperson. Two things with the census, so the 2020 census are coming up. The city is going to be forming a census committee, and if you are interested in being a part of the census committee, then please fill out an application, a volunteer application. And if you are interested in being hired by the census, and just to be clear that Asbury Park doesn't hire you, the census hires you, they are paying up to $20 an hour in jobs to help us get an accurate reading of the amount of people in Asbury Park.
That's it. On Thursday, November 7, at Second Baptist Church from 6:30 to 7:30, there's an event by Hackensack Meridian Hospital in conjunction with the Mayor's Wellness Committee about eating and preparing healthy food. Registration is required. You can call 1-800-560-9990. It's going to be a great event. It's open to the public, it's free, and there'll be great food and options how you can incorporate them into your fall menus. Only bad thing about it, it's the same night as the council meeting, so we won't be there, but hopefully a lot of people will attend. Thank you.
We're on to matters from the City Manager.
None at this time.
I thought you were going to make a report on the beach bathing.
I wanted to do it at the regular council meeting.
Okay, so Rita's here. Okay, thank you. Okay. Good idea.
Matters from the City Attorney?
Nothing at this time.
Take a short recess?
Long recess. Yeah.
Okay, we will reconvene at 7. Regular meeting called to order?
Pam, where did you get this? Because it's right in the software.
Councilmember Chapman, here. Councilmember Clayton. Councilmember Kendall?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Here.
Mayor Moore?
Here.
Please stand for silent prayer, moment of reflection. We will now salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As to comply with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, PL 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press, the Coaster, and the Star Ledger on January 2, 2019, and posted on the bulletin board on the same date. All notices are on file with the city clerk. We're on to public participation. Do I have a motion to open the meeting to the public?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton? Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
If any members of the public would like to be heard, please come to the mic, state your name and address for the record. Anyone?
Okay.
Oh, for God's sakes.
Somebody got, thanks.
I'll always volunteer, you know that, right, Mayor? Ernest Mingoli, 400 Deal Lake Drive, Asbury Park, New Jersey. I'd like to start out by talking about Sunday. I was having dinner at the new restaurant on Cookman, near Main. A robbery, a beating, and a biting took place of the owners, and I can't seem to get the Coaster, Asbury Park Press, PIO, Mr. Casey to even talk to me. It belongs in the paper, and the headline should be, "East Side Is Not Exempt From Crime Files," is the story. Is it going to run? No. I'm trying, but no. And by the way, those people are shaken up. They just opened up their business, and they were afraid to walk out of their store. And the police response was slow, it wasn't effective. I was right there having my dinner, as a matter of fact, when the police came in. Who do you think they came to bother? Me. While I'm having my dinner. So why it's not in the paper? I don't know. And why Mr. Casey won't answer the phone? He's the PIO, I think. How does he do that? And of course, the only thing that goes in the paper is what the Coaster writes. Like, when I come here, and you let out with a litany of things of how bad I am, you write that all in the paper, in the Coaster, but nothing what I say back. So the City Manager gets to lambaste me in public, right? And I don't get to say anything back. That's, that's why I like to spend time in Long Branch, too, because I can't take too much of this. It's nonstop what you're doing here. These meetings, these boards, these committees, they're staffed by people who don't know what they're talking about. They're passing like jetports and heliports and rooftop penthouses like they're candy, giving them out to the developers. And, you know, the deputy mayor looks at everybody like we're strange. What's strange about that?
The Coaster did a story.
On what? On what?
Don't take Ernest's time.
You know what, Mayor, I appreciate that. So let's see what I have in 55 seconds. I'm unhappy with the city council board representing the city. They, in my opinion, destroyed Long Branch, and they're still here destroying Asbury Park. We have a police chief who failed the test. He has no background to be in such a crime-ridden city that I don't even know what he's doing in that job. Maybe you could tell me. Then we have the incident with me, where they came to my house and my hotel with guns and knives, and I haven't gotten one apology from this city, from a councilperson or anybody. And I'd like you to know what it must feel like, because I'm outspoken, to have to have people come in the middle of the morning with knives and guns and extol their bias and hate on me. And I don't get one apology, one phone call, one nothing. And I can't even go back to my house, that's how dangerous it is. You know, and what does everybody?
Thank you, Ernest, and I'm gonna, and I'm not gonna let you respond, but I'm gonna let you think.
Let me think.
You're, right. I'm gonna let you think. You're wrong. I apologize to you.
To who?
To you.
Where was I?
Standing next to the mailbox where you always do outside City Hall.
I was standing next to the mailbox.
Because every time I come in and go out, you're...
Sometimes I stand near the window, sometimes I stand near the door. Don't say always.
Okay.
You can think about it.
You think about, if, recall your memory if I apologize to you.
Really? But you did, okay, then if you did, you're the only one.
Okay.
Who else came up?
I did. I have on numerous occasions and talked to you. Right? And I said I felt bad for the things that happened to you. Yes, I have.
You know what? I'm so upset, maybe I didn't hear you.
Oh, okay. Because you be talking too much, you don't give nobody else a chance to talk.
And I know you mean it.
Okay, all right.
But that's two out of what, 15,000 people?
Just drive careful. Drive careful. Long Branch. Thank you, sir.
Well, send me a bell, Rita.
The mics aren't working.
Is there a hand one over there? Is there a hand one on the podium?
Oh, it unplugged. It got unplugged.
It's just unplugged. No, 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 it's a wireless mic.
Do you have a hand one?
The other one's broken. Good?
Yeah.
Hi, Rita Moreno, 8th Avenue. I saw something on here that the City Manager might need in 2020, staffing needs. What does that mean? More employees? That's the number one question. Number two is, last meeting on the, on the lifeguard house, it's, if you read the ordinance, it said there's a deposit of $400,000. Is that right? I don't know who the deposit goes to. Is that just like part of the bond or what? So that makes it close to almost $2 million to build that lifeguard house. It's kind of expensive, a $2 million Taj Mahal. But anyway, could you explain the $400,000 down payment, or is that a misprint? And it adds up to almost $1,800,000 and something dollars. And what is the staffing needs? What does that mean? More employees?
Finish, finish.
Are you losing any?
Finish all your questions, and we'll answer.
That's the two questions. Are we losing employees next year?
Item one, executive, was on executive, and when the minutes come out, that would be explained. As far as, I don't have the ordinance in front of me. Michael, do you know what she's talking about, the $400,000 on top of the 1350?
It's not in top of. The down payment is included in that total amount, so I think it was 1.4 million. So it doesn't go up, it's actually 400,000's cash, 1 million would be borrowed. It's not, it doesn't add to it, it's part of the total amount.
And that, that, then you're not taking it out of beach revenue, right?
We are.
Oh, that's the other thing, you forgot. I forgot. The beach report.
No, we didn't. It's right here. Here's the beach, we were waiting for you.
Okay, thank you.
I didn't do it in workshop because we were waiting for you. The total revenue increase was about $487,000. There was a total of 7,647 beach tickets sold. That includes all the tickets, the seasonal, Viply. There was an increase of about 10, maybe 15 from the year before. The biggest increase was in adult users. Adults in 2018, there was 4,325, and in 2019, it went up almost 200, went over, over 200 to 4,538. We saw a decrease in seniors of about 100 and about 150 decrease in teen sales. So there was more adults on the beach this year and about $500,000 more in revenue.
That sounds good. What about the parking?
Parking, I don't have in front of me, we're still working on that one.
The parking, we can't give you until the end of the year, but we are 10 to 15 percent ahead of last year.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tracy Rogers, Sewell Avenue. An article came across, it says San Francisco is losing resi, this is in USA Today, October 21, 2019. San Francisco is losing residents because it's too expensive for nearly everyone. And if we look at all the housing situations that are going on over the country, we need to examine exactly what Asbury's looking at. California has just put in rent control. Washington, Facebook is actually pledging $1 billion to create affordable housing in San Jose. Google is promising a billion dollars for San Francisco. Washington, Amazon is working on a deal to create housing. As I said many years, if you don't look at what your strategy is, it's just, you think you're just going to look for rich people to come in. We're all looking at the fact that a $5 million trophy property was dispossessed in Asbury Park. We look at the prices going up. We look at the residents that are being pushed out. You have an article in the Asbury Park Press that talks about the Boston Way, half, it's half-empty after over 400 applications were accepted, and then you're going out for more to try to get people in. You have a property, 407 on Sewell Avenue, that a person just had, and over the year, is pushing everyone out. And if you go by the building, half the apartments are left vacant. We're looking at the stock of apartments that are on the listing, and they're growing up, with one-bedroom apartments going from 1,600 to 1,900 in Asbury Park. Who are we looking at? And what are we looking at are the people that are here. We're, we're not examining how we're, how we're planning this city. And with the fact that you may have a $4,000 increase in taxes because of school, and people are thinking about their house going up, no one's going to want to pay for a house that they, they feel the taxes are going to be absurd. I mean, there are people who are going to have to look at what they're doing. There are people who want to be here, that came here, and now are going to suffer, or the people who are just waiting for that big buck, or the investors who have made the money in this city. We have not looked at the people that are here, who want to be here and want to make the city exactly what it's supposed to be and what it was becoming. We have to steadily look at all of these markets, now these major cities. We're a microcosm of, of what San Francisco is. What they did in 20 years, we're doing in four, in four years, and we're going to be hurting when it comes around for where everybody's going. So we have to look at where we're at.
I mean, I think Tracy knows. Tracy, I think you know, I think you were part of the process. We had Beth here tonight going through the current, the dual track, which is the writing of the ordinances and the declaratory judgment. I can say unequivocally that this council's top priority is affordable housing. We see what you're seeing, and we, I look forward to meeting with the committee and updating them on our, our meeting tonight with Beth.
Thank you. Thank you, Tracy. Motion to close?
Move it.
Second. All in favor?
Anthony Capelli, East Avenue. I just want to put it out there, I represent the carpenters local here in Asbury Park and part of Monmouth County. They're doing a lot of building and construction here. If you have young members, anybody that wants to be a carpenter, you have good jobs as a carpenter, there's benefits. We can also build this, build the town. That's, that's a, you know, that's a double-edged sword. Put the people to work on the, on the projects in their own environment, all right? Just something to think about.
Thank you.
Do you have any flyers?
I'm sorry?
Do you have flyers that you're passing out?
Do I have flyers?
Or where can people contact you at?
I have a card, I have a business card. I can give, I can give as many as I need. Sure.
And I just think for the record, you need his address, no?
Yeah.
Melanie just needs your address.
Anthony, your address.
Yeah, so 18 East Avenue, I don't live in town though, it's Mulligan Hill, New Jersey.
Okay, thank you. Sir?
Thank you.
Bob Bell Fury for Special Olympics New Jersey. Mayor and council, thank you for allowing us to do fundraising in your town. This year, again, we're going to do the Thanks For Giving Plunge on November 16. We have 25,000 special athletes registered in New Jersey. Law enforcement raises money for them every year. I'm the director of law enforcement for the State of New Jersey for Special Olympics New Jersey athletes. Each year, we raise about $4 million. 100% of that money goes to our athletes. There is no salaries, and I need 40 officers that work with me or myself. And everything we do helps athletes. We've just started a young athlete program that is three-year-olds, two-year-olds to seven. Used to be seven-year-olds could participate, now we start at two. By seven, they're light years ahead of where they would have been. So thank you for allowing us to do our fundraiser here. Thank you for the beach, and we really appreciate it. We have a little thing that we'd like to take a picture with you and town council, if you don't mind, after your break. And we just want to let you know that 25,000 families count on us, and thank you for being so generous to us. That's all.
Just do me a favor. I, I know it, but announce the date again, so because it goes out there to TV land, so everybody can know what the date.
November 16.
November 16.
Yes, sir. We start at about 9 o'clock in the morning registration, and we plunge at 12.
Fantastic.
Oh, I'm sorry, 1.
We can't thank you enough for doing this, and as far as thanking us, it goes the opposite way, thank you.
Well, it's important that we have your cooperation, and it's very gratifying that we do.
Are you talking about just sports, or are you talking about recreation also?
We do sports for our athletes, but it, it is recreational also. They learn so many things, like self-confidence, their ability to deal with other people. As they get older, Special Olympics helps them find jobs that they can now be productive. Some are very handicapped, so they need the support that we give them and Special Olympics New Jersey gives them. And, but we basically pay for all their uniforms, their training, their facilities, so they can become, all they can become, I know it's cliche, within their disability.
Recreation have a special need program during the summer, and I think you guys will be available to us if we reach out to you.
You can call Special Olympics.
You can talk to Alicia Floyd over there, if you have time.
Well, excuse me. Ed Dean is the representative from Special Olympics New Jersey, who...
Oh, good, good, good. Okay, thank you.
So you're aware of what we do and where we are.
I appreciate it, thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Now, motion to move.
Move it.
Second. All in favor?
All right.
And then I'm going to ask the audience, would you mind if we take a short break and take the picture? And I apologize, we would have put you on the work session, and had you done it sooner, since sit there all the time, but we'll definitely come down, we thank you.
I thought you were Maryland. Oh, how's the baby? How are you?
Yeah, I said you gave us a nice sweater.
Still baby. So she can wipe her own ass, she's a baby.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to hearings for 2019-43, a capital ordinance appropriating the sum of $30,000 for computers and related equipment for the police department. Do I have a motion to open 2019-43 to the public?